Arise, ready? Okay, let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's very funny with the deferment speed of the voices, that's very funny. All right, that's not supposed to laugh. Okay, Kelly, let's take the roll call, please.
Kim Connor.
Here.
Dennis Gagnon. Peter Lewis.
Here.
Wora O'Connell.
Here.
Neil Tomlin. Heidi Wendell.
Here.
Neil Zuckerman.
Here. Okay, seems like we got a quorum. Most, many boards, they asked the attorney for that. I think it's pretty obvious since we're all here, so, fine. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I just have one, I have one comment about the minute.
Okay.
So, under present, it says everybody but me.
Yes, it does.
I think you were late to the meeting.
I might have been late to the meeting, but I'm in the minutes, so, that's just my only correction. We usually have, in the past, we would usually ask if, you know, anybody had any corrections before we approved them.
Well, I was trying to take a motion first, and then we could end from the motion, we could open a discussion and then approve, but that's fine. We can, we've got to have a motion first, the second, then discussion, then the vote.
Oh, okay.
I'll move to
Either way.
For the minutes.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any commentary on it, any other corrections? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, any abstaining? Okay, minutes passed, that was easy. Okay, return of escrow, Pell Lombardi, turn to Mr. Gabba, if you have any commentary about the return of that escrow.
I checked with our office, have one outstanding bill for $18. If somebody will pay me $18, you can release the escrow.
Well, I
You volunteer and run.
Well, I'm not to stand on ceremony, but I also think Mr. Shea is a really good steward of our money, so I kind of think we need to have him pay us the money. I mean, am I being silly?
Well, you can authorize release of it upon payment of the single outstanding legal bill. And we'll pass that on to the town board, I'm sure that they'll make sure that the check is cut, you know, for then Mr. Paul can get his escrow back.
I'll make that
Okay, a motion, okay, second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, lots of seconding, God bless. Any more discussion, sure there's not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, okay, God bless, Mr. Lombardi gets his money back, let's move on. All right, so can we, Cecilia, can we let Mr. Kepler and his advisors come on, please? Cecilia, did you hear me?
Yeah, I was looking for Mr. Kepler.
Yeah, Kelly's letting everybody in.
Good, sorry Kelly, sorry, sorry.
That's okay, I believe that would be Glenn Watson, and I do not see him. Oh, there he is.
Glenn?
Yep, nope, there he goes, he's on.
Well, there is no play without Glenn Watson as one of our lead actors, so.
That's right.
It's like the passion play without Christ, we need him.
Glenn, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
No, no.
We can. Okay, Glenn, the floor is yours, talk us through the introduction of Kepler, please. You're on mute, Glenn.
I'm fixing it, please bear with me, I was at a public hearing the other night. It fishgill, and I pushed the wrong button, and I lost everything. Fortunately, I was pretty close to the end of it, so, I've actually practiced.
The floor is yours, my friend, whenever you can, no rush.
Presenting, Mr. Kepler owns a piece of property on Moog Road, quite a large piece of property. It's improved with a house and a driveway and a garage and a couple of outbuildings, and I'm looking through this. You, can I share my screen now?
Please. I'm going to interrupt Glenn for one second, I'm sorry, Kelly, we didn't mention, it'd be helpful to know how many members of the public we have listening in, I didn't get a send. Oh, I see, 51, all right. So we do have a fairly voluminous crowd here, sorry Glenn, continue, please.
Okay, I'd like to share my screen. I don't know if I can do that or you do that.
No, you have the opportunity, you can do that, Glenn.
Share my screen?
Yes.
Okay. And I want to bring up this drawing. So, and I want to go to the second sheet. So Mr. Kepler owns a fairly large property on Moog Road. Near the top of the cul-de-sac, and he wants to improve his landscaping. And he's engaged landscape architect David Eaton to present a plan. It's Moog Road over here on the left. The driveway comes in off of Moog Road and comes up to that existing house. And existing garage behind the house, and then it begins to fall off. The issue, not issue, but the fact is that there's a ridge line running through, right through the spine of the property on which the house is located, and so we're here for, because we're in the ridge line protection area, and we want to do a want to do a a landscape plan. Now, here's where I want to minimize this. And I want to show you the overall site plan from Mr. Egan. Essentially what he's doing, and you'll see some proposed plantings along the driveway, of some proposed plantings out towards the east. Some proposed planting towards the north, and some proposed plants toward the east, I said east before, west I should have said. So those are new plantings basically to thicken up the landscape. And within the immediate vicinity of the house is where most of the work, the real work is going to occur. This is an enlarged view up by the house. Going to build a outdoor living space, you'll see some water in there, that's a water feature, it's not a swimming pool. It's a very formal, formal garden-type outdoor place that he wants to build here. And that will be protected by some of the trees that I showed you on the last slide. The porch is going to be extended to the, towards the road, about 15 feet, maybe it's 15 and a half, yeah, 15 and a half feet. And on the existing deck, in this area on the north, or the west half of the existing deck. It's going to be a three-season room constructed at that spot. The plans are still being worked on, they are fairly complete in terms of concept. I think you have in your package is a letter from the Hudson Islands Land Trust asking for some more details, which we're going to provide them and provide you. The land trust is involved in it because they do, the property is subject to a conservation easement that is held by the land trust. So we're working on that, and that's pretty much the whole story.
Okay, Glenn, thank you. I'll turn to Ron, please.
The board received a technical memorandum from my office. Actually, the matter was on back in the July meeting, but never heard due to time constraints. This represents the first opportunity the board has had to review the project. I think Glenn has provided a reasonable summary of the proposed improvements. Because of the disturbances plan, they need both site plan approval and special permit approval. Given disturbances within areas of greater than 20% slope for the various landscaping they're proposing. There's a, the application itself is still incomplete because there's a few things missing, the most important of which is a environmental assessment form, which must be filed. And then there's an initial considerations to be made by the board. One is whether a site inspection should initially be held to evaluate potential impacts to the area. With respect to secret, it represents an unlisted action, as I said, a fully AAF still remains to be filed for the project. There's no other agencies that are involved in the project that I can tell. However, because of the disturbance expected within steep slopes, there's a referral required to the conservation board. So that referral could be considered tonight. And then there's various technical issues to be resolved. And again, as it's the initial meeting of the board, since it's a major project, the first thing you typically do is classify it as a major. So that can be done as well, in addition to the referral to conservation board.
I was under the impression that this would come under the type-two actions that recently were adopted with regard to single-family dwellings and minor improvements to existing dwellings, so I'm not so sure it's an unlisted action.
All right, I can discuss that further with the town attorney. The overall extent of disturbance on the site goes well beyond what's proposed at the building. It was the extent of landscaping proposed throughout all areas of the site. But we can further research that.
Well, okay, I just
Glenn, if that's the case, then we're not going to be able to vote on that topic about whether lead or secret, I assume.
But you're going to be, you're the only involved agency, so to the extent that there is secret review, you would be the lead agency. You just declare yourselves lead agency, you wouldn't circulate for it or have an uncoordinated review. I'm inclined to agree with Glenn that it's a type-two action, but, you know, look, I'll review the secret regs just to make sure. I'd originally written it was a type-two, I just crossed it out and wrote unlisted. You know, I think tonight you should declare yourselves lead agency, because even if it's a type-two, you're technically lead agency. Hold off on classification of it until next month, it's not going to make any difference. They do have to submit a full EAF, because that's what the code says.
Right.
Your CB referral now, and declared a major action, and I think that, after that, like Ron said, you decide whether or not you're going to hold a site inspection, and I think that's about as far as you can go right now.
So, Ron, were you finished, because Steve jumped in, do you have anything else to add, Ron?
No, I was done, thank you.
Okay, good, all right, board members, questions of Glenn? It'd be easy if you raised your hand, I'll call on you.
Not this month.
Nope, no one?
Not yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so let's go through the procedural votes, and then I'll bring up the question of site visit when we're done with that, if that's okay. So, let's start with declaring a major action at this point, can I have a motion to that effect, please?
Also move that.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions, okay, major action, now let's get a referral to the conservation board. Can I have a referral, please, a motion for referral, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Peter and Dennis, all in favor, any discussion, no, all in favor. Aye, all opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Third, so we're going to declare ourselves lead agency, with a vote on that, yes? No? You're on mute, Steve, you're on mute.
Yes, there should be a vote to have the board declare itself the agency.
Yeah, all right, have a motion, Kim, second.
I'll second.
Neil, Neil's the designated seconder tonight. Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, okay, great, okay. So, any other votes we got to take, Ron, good?
I just see the issue of whether a site visit should be scheduled.
Yeah, so let me ask the question of my colleague, so, an EAF typically is an important input when we walk around. I typically read it and think it's a useful guide, especially for a major project, knowing, of course, this is only an outdoor setting. I'd like a discussion first, but before I ask for a vote on whether we should do a site visit now, or we'll wait till the EAF, particularly because it is the last couple of weeks of August, and I have no idea what everyone's vacation schedules are. As you know, this August meeting is atypical, we generally do not have an August meeting. So I don't want to be put in a position where a board member's out of town. So discussion about a site visit before an EAF, please, any thoughts?
I think we should have a site visit.
Yes, agreed, but before we read the EAF or after?
Well, when are we going to get the EAF?
I can have it for you on Monday.
Okay.
So if we read it before we go to the site visit, and it's not before, you know, if it isn't for the next meeting, but it's in between the meeting and the site visit, I don't see why we can't do that.
Okay, well, that's good, if you can, by Monday. What are, will people, I'd like you to just show up hands, who will be in town between now and Labor Day? Okay, so we got a quorum, so let's go ahead and let's have a, let's have a site visit. I need a motion for a site visit, yeah, I guess so, because it's a public meeting, so, let's take a vote on a, can I have a motion to have a site visit? Kelly, we'll come back to a date in a moment, can I have a motion to have a site visit for Kepler, please?
I'll make that motion to have a site visit.
Thank you, Peter, second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Neil, and Kim, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, okay, very good, okay, Kelly, pull out the calendar, please.
Our next visit, or next meeting is on the 17th, so you have the 5th, which is a Saturday, the 6th, which is Sunday.
We typically do it, we typically do 9:30 a.m. on Sundays, so, that's the typical route. So I'm going to ask, do people want to wait till after Labor Day and do it on September 12th, or do we want to try and go on, sorry, that's on the 13th? Or try to do it before Labor Day on the 30th?
But Labor Day is, isn't Labor Day the, isn't, when's Labor Day?
Weekend of the, Labor Day is on September 7th this year, and so I'm trying to avoid booking on the weekend of Labor Day, so I'm trying to avoid the 6th. So that leaves the 30th or the 13th?
I'm free either way.
Anyone opposed to the 30th? I see a lot of
I'm good for the 30th.
Yeah.
All right, good.
Yeah.
Thumbs up, please, 30th?
30th.
Good, all right, Kelly, can we book the 30th of, is that okay with you, Glenn, sorry, I didn't even ask Glenn, sorry, Glenn.
That's fine.
Not enough time to notice it to the papers?
Um, if I get it into the paper if I get it sent to them tomorrow, I can get it, it'll be fine.
Is that too tight, Kelly, for you, is that too tight, what do you think, you have time?
I would have to get it to the paper tomorrow.
If you have time, let's do that, and if not, I think we're then left with the 13th, because I don't want to do it over the memorial. I'm not going to, I don't think it's fair to do it on Labor Day weekend to people.
Well, it wouldn't go in the paper until one would go in on the 26th and one the 28th, so it's really close.
Right, so I'm just saying, like, I think as a matter of appropriateness, we're not going to have it on September 6th, so our choice is the 30th or the 13th. And if you think you don't have time tomorrow to get it in, then we should do it on the 13th.
I think what she's saying is that the newspapers come out on those days, and maybe one of them is too close to the site.
It's literally the Friday, and you guys are going on Sunday, so it's really
All right, so let's do the 13th, then let's do the 13th, then.
Okay.
All right, 13th, how are people
September 13th.
September 13th. Okay?
That's good.
That's the example, time to get it in, good point, Kelly, thank you for bringing that up, and Kim, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Glenn, let's move on to, where is
A motion to that effect?
For the date?
I'll make a motion to that effect.
I don't, sure, I don't, do we need a motion for a date, I mean, yes, so, sure.
You really don't, you already said
Yeah, I don't think we
You're going to set it
I already said, Glenn, Kim is motion happy, Kim, you're motion happy.
I was following you.
What's your problem, Karen, is there?
You can just tell, she's the first vice chair, and she just wants the chair so bad, she's dying, just wants it.
Just trying to keep it
Yeah. Can we vote to move on to the next topic?
Yeah.
All right, let's move on, all right, Glenn, you're back on, Magazino. I don't know if we have some for Glenn to present as much as for Ron, what do we have to do on Magazino at this point after the site visit with our dual Magazinos?
Magazino is the plans have been revised, the additional information you've asked for in the past has been filed. They're now really at a point where you should be scheduling a public hearing.
Okay, so I putting, having three public hearings in parallel will be an unfair burden on this board. So I'd like to defer it until we ensure we close one of the two open, I don't know if people feel that's unfair, go ahead, Kim.
I actually have a couple of questions before we get to that.
Well, then let's see if Glenn has anything he wants to present first, and then we can ask questions from that. Glenn, is anything you or Miguel want to present?
Yeah, we're in separate places tonight, so I think I'll, without objection, I think I'll go first. And then, because most of the changes were things that we did, Magazino, presentation.
I did let Miguel in, so he is on.
Thank you. Site plan. 2005, 20 Which one do I want? Four? Four? There we go. You still seeing my screen?
No, see it yet.
No, we do not.
The basic plan has not changed from what we discussed, what we've been discussing with you in terms of what the proposed improvements are, and, but we've addressed some of the things, I'm going to try to say this very carefully, this three-bedroom, single-family dwelling up in the northeast corner is still in the same spot, same parking. What's changed up here is we took the septic system out of this area below the below the house, and we have located a septic system in the area, I think you've all been to the site with the site walk. Certainly, most of you have, we have a septic area here that's going to serve as
Glenn, 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 I'm sorry to interrupt you, are you trying to, are you trying to show us, are you pointing on a screen?
Yes, I am.
You're not sharing, you're not sharing your screen right now?
That's what I thought I asked a moment ago, let me see if I can get back there and share the screen, share my screen. And, myself back up. Now? Do you see it now?
No, we just see your smiling face. Miguel, stop laughing at him.
Muted, Miguel.
Glenn, do you want me to share this screen?
Yeah. Okay, yes, please.
All right.
I don't know why that happened.
It's in there.
Now you wonder why we were backed up a little bit, come on, this isn't hard, it's hard stuff, hard stuff. Hey, Glenn, you're doing a great job, and this is hard, it's hard for everybody.
Glenn?
I can do it.
Hold on, you can do it?
I think so.
There you go, Glenn, there you go.
Okay. So as I started to say, up in the northeast corner, we still have the three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. And and the parking area is still the same, what we have removed is the septic area from this area, from the area just downhill in front of it. And we moved that to a general septic area that was going to serve as both the the single-family dwelling and the new building. We're going to have a gravity line that's going to go down and feed into this fairly large septic system. We've done tests up there, I think when you were out there, you saw some of the test holes, and we discussed this location near the donkeys. We've addressed that, we've added the drainage to the property, we've added some of the information with regard to this with regard to the stormwater pollution prevention plan. We've highlighted some of the the traffic flows. And essentially what we did was took Ron's memo, went through it, and and tried to answer all the questions, we are still, we still own some technical information with regard to the stormwater pollution prevention plan. The labeling has been changed, but the basic layout really has stayed the same, and we clarified things like where the signs were, there was some question about that. So there was one other thing I wanted to mention. I think that's, I think that's about it. We have, there was a question raised with regard to whether this was transient housing or not, I spoke to the client. Remember, we had called it scholar's residence, the scholar will be in residence for approximately a year. And that's the general plan, and it's, and will occupy this building. And I submitted some information with regard to the meaning of transient, and with regard, and I know Steve has Steve Gabba has responded with some questions about it, and I think it really all turns, from my perspective, it all turns on the term of the of the person's occupancy, and I think a year is probably okay. Other than that, we're, I think that that's about what I need to tell you, I don't think, I don't think we've made any other major changes that I need to go over, and I'd be happy to have Miguel give you another look at his plans. So I'm going to stop sharing.
We've we've made no changes to the architecture, you know, the product, the only thing that we updated was the lighting. So, we made sure that we followed a no pollution policy, and we were not able to submit last time, I A D, so we have the plan, but we will submit it in the next round.
I can show you, you want me to show you?
I can show it, don't worry.
Okay.
So this is still the same, this is the landscape, hasn't changed. The size, and this is the old plan that you have, and this is the new, so basically, we're having all lights that don't project up to Skype, so everything's all lights that don't, um, project up to Skype. So everything's downlit and, uh, and these are the metrics that we will submit. All these are step lights around this sidewalk. And then for the parking, we will have, uh, in the center of the island, we will have double poles and, uh, and then single on the perimeter, here four and here another four. And, uh, then the rest is, remains the same. So.
Can I ask a question about the lighting?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so the, the lights that are going, that are what you call the step lights? How much light, those are in the ground, correct?
No, those are on the perimeter of the building. They will be eighteen inches above ground.
Okay, so then what's the, the lighting that's in the paving?
The lighting of the paving will be ballards.
So what I'm asking is, is that lighting in the ground, like in the paving?
It will be, they will have a little pole, um, that will raise the, the lights and, uh, will, will be like projecting at the same height as the step lights on the wall.
Oh, okay, because it looked like from your drawing, it looked like it was a round light that fit into the actual paving.
Let me show it again, but, uh, again, all this is going to be, uh, this plan is gonna be submitted to, to use, Ron can, uh, confirm. All these are the, uh, the ballards and these will be in the building.
Okay.
So this is, this is the fixture and these are the metrics of the fixture.
You're not sharing?
Not sure.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm talking to myself. Apologies. Share screen. There. So again, um, sorry, these are ballards and these are along the perimeter of the building. This is the fixture.
Oh, no, that's not the picture I'm talking about.
You're talking about this. These ones here?
No, it's this. I don't know if you can.
I'm sorry, Kim. Wooden panel.
So what this is, I'm sorry to do it this way, but there's the interlocking pavers and then a light that seems to fit into them.
That is Glenn's detail. I'm sorry, but then, um, Glenn, can you explain that? Because that is not, there's not gonna be lights on the interlocking, um, pavers for sure.
No?
No, absolutely not. I don't know exactly.
No, that's there, that's, I, I, I'd have to look, but I.
It may have been a copy paste, uh, detail, but, uh, that is not, um, there's no lighting on, on there. Uh, these.
Yeah, okay, so, so this thing that is on sheet six from Glenn that says details that, that, all these lights are gonna be downlit. There won't be no upward projecting light? That's what you're telling me?
Totally, and this, this plan will be submitted on, uh, in, in the next middle. This is the lighting plan, uh, for outdoors. So, uh, this, again, these are the metrics that comply. This fixture is basically the same one we've used, uh, throughout. And this is what, uh, we're using along this, uh, sidewalk. So people can see when they walk, uh, from one building to another. And this is the minimum lighting requirement for the parking. And these are the fixtures that are the same, uh, brand and the same iteration, but for all lighting.
Okay.
And again, this will be submitted, uh, in the next round.
Okay, other questions?
I have questions. Uh, I have a couple of questions, but they're not related to the design. They're related to the easement.
I think that's all, it's all within place. Bring up whatever you'd like. You're the floor, Kim.
Okay, so this is the, is the, um, a document that was in our packet. That's the declaration of covenants and restrictions for this property when Chris Fadden, um, turned it into hu- housing lots. And it talks about a, Glenn, it talks about a plat and it talks about different lots on the plat. Um, and so my question is, is the Magazino lot lot fourteen, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, or sixteen in this document?
No.
No, so where, is there a plat we can see? Like, how do we know what's what? Is it, it mentions that four of the lots and then there's a fifth lot and I just don't know what, you know, there's no plat submitted with this.
You, the original plat was approved by the planning board. It had four lots up on the top where the, where the homes are, where Chris Fadden's home is and, or his home, it is a house he left, left recently. Oh, it's a new home up there. The fifth lot was all the rest of the property. It, it included all of the Magazino property and, and all of the Fadden property, uh, the property that's, the subject is lot line adjustment, which we're also processing at this, at this time. So it's the, the road is on that lot. It was, it was the front part of the overall subdivision, which included, and included the big Cybertron pr- property, which was a hundred acres or so. I'm gonna say, I don't remember really what it was. And then the, the four lots in the back. And I think in one of the cover letter, I explained some of that. Essentially, the idea that Mr. Fadden had was to develop a residential properties behind a commercial subdivision. And he got to the point where he got the residential property approved. This, the, the commercial portion, or I think it was actually industrial property at that time, was all of the rest of the property of downhill towards Route nine, included his building and included the piece where, where the new building is going on the Magazino lot. And that was all on the first subdivision map. There have been several changes in the subdivision map since, but that's the map that it, that it covers and, uh, this, this property was certainly part of it. I know that the owner is working, um, with the, with the people to, to make a, uh, minor revisions to that agreement that they'll all, you know, that's, so they'll, it'll be more equitable, but, uh, right now, that's what we have.
Okay, so this, um, agreement then includes the current, um, the land that is currently Magazino, correct?
I believe, I believe it does, yes.
Okay, so it talks about, um, uh, maintenance agreement?
Right.
And is that what he's negotiating? Is it change to the maintenance agreement?
Well, there's, there's discussion going on about that. I don't know the details of the discussion.
Oh, sorry, may I? Uh, cause I was in the conversation with Jared Del Valle, which, uh, has fifty percent of the shares of the, of the area. And, uh, what happened was Jared presented the plan for shares that he wants to implement, which, I was with Mr. Spann. Uh, he said that it was absolutely fine, but there's, uh, all the two shareholders, uh, of the, of the, of the, um, of, of the properties up there that have not, um, yet, uh, signed, there's not, there's not the, uh, maintenance contract, uh, signed by all parties. So, um, he's trying to get them, uh, a buy to, to these maintenance agreements. In our site, in our site, we're totally fine with the, the shares that he proposed and, uh, they were more than reasonable and we have no problem. It's mostly that, uh, he's trying to get the other two, uh, dwellers up there to, uh, sign this agreement.
Okay, so. Okay.
The, I, the only thing that I can provide you with is, uh, spreadsheet that Jared, uh, gave us with the percentages that we already agreed to, but there's no official documents that we can hand you.
Okay. So that's in here. It's supposed to exist. Alright, so the real reason I was asking this question is because in this agreement, it says that there's not supposed to be any livestock on any of the residential properties. So I just wanted to make sure that the Magazino property, which has the donkeys, is not included in the part of this document that says no livestock.
Yeah, well, it, 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 under the old, under the old zoning, it was not residential property.
No, it's, it's in this, but it's in this document.
But you just said, you just said it limited to residential properties.
There are four properties that were the lots that were for residential properties and they are not allowed to have livestock, but it doesn't say anything about the fifth property, which is why I was asking you about that. Cause I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, um, you know, just that you knew about it in case it needed to be adjusted.
Thank you.
Now, so my concern about having a maintenance agreement on the road is, you know, as you mentioned, if there are large events and you're planning to park fifty to fifty-five cars along the driveway, I think that would be of concern to the other people who live on that road. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Fine, we, we're, we're, we're aware of our responsibilities and, uh, those, we really don't expect to have that kind of event very often. That, that's.
I understand, but if you lived on the road and there were suddenly fifty cars, you might, you know, be a little concerned about maintenance for your road and that sort of thing. And then the only other thing.
Well, I mean, well, Kim, let's pause on that one. That's a really interesting question. Glenn's response to your question was, as I understand, we won't have that many events. And I'm not sure that's what you're saying. There may be a requirement to not have those kind of, not park in that area or some stipulation to have the sized curb for some reason. So I, it's an interesting point you raised.
And it's just, we just have to think about, you know, the future. Um, and then my only other question is, has to do with, um, in the technical comments, response number, to number three, where it says, "The board issued comments based upon the July fifth, twenty twenty, site inspection of the property, which the applicant should respond to as appropriate significant concerns included. Prospect for increased occupancy of the site, which could impact traffic generation, Route nine traffic and related impacts on-site utilities. The applicant should provide a written narrative to discuss such impacts and offer mitigation for any potential adverse impacts identified. And then also impacts to Vineyard Road, which potentially may likewise require mitigation." And the response here is, "Response to site visit comments, including the two above, are outlined in this memo." But I don't know if I really understand where the, they are outlined. I'd, I'd like to see the narrative that Ron requested. You know, maybe restate the things that you consider to be the responses to those.
I'll have, I'll have to review that. I'll review it and make sure it's answered properly.
Cause I just wanna make sure I know what you're saying.
Okay.
And I guess.
The other ques-
I think that's it for me for today.
Okay, other questions? Anyone? Anyone? Okay. It's a, oh, go ahead, Steve.
I'm unmuted here. Um, I'd sent a memo to Glenn, an email memo to Glenn. Um, and one of the questions in it was, how many people are going to be living in the, uh, the scholar residence? I, I don't think I got an answer to that. How, how many are gonna be there, Glenn?
My understanding, and Miguel can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that it's going to be a scholar and his family.
So it's just one scholar?
One scholar and his family.
Okay, and in my email, I suggested that notes be put on the plan, saying that there will be only one scholar and his family and that the period that the residence is let to the scholar will be no less than thirty days. Is that acceptable?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, and the only other thing is, I'm, I apologize if I missed it earlier, but I mean, I'm, I'm hearing about donkeys on the property. What, what's the situation with the donkeys?
Oh, they're, they're just, it's a little preserve.
A little preserve? What, what, I don't understand. What is?
They're endangered Italian donkeys. There are about five of them, Miguel, is that right?
That's correct.
And, and, um, they're, they're in order to save them from extinction.
Well, it's, it's a worthy cause as far as that goes, certainly, but I don't know that keeping donkeys is a permitted accessory used to museums.
I do not recall in our previous dealings, and I must say, I was surprised, given the la, I've been on the board every time we've approved all the many moves. I don't remember us approving donkeys, but we went for the site visit, they definitely were there. So, an interesting conver, and I, Steve, I look, I think it's appropriate for you to raise the topic.
They're the size of small dogs or large dogs.
Listen, I'm, I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I'm not saying it's intrusive, not saying it's hurting anything. I'm saying from a legal standpoint, as far as what the town code says, I mean, it's not like you're keeping a house cat or something like that. It's, this is it's livestock and, and I don't know that that's, I, Glenn, have you given any thought to use of?
I have not. I'll look at it. I'll look at it. I haven't given it any thought, to tell you the truth.
Alright, appreciate if you could get back to us on that.
I will.
Must be having some big dogs, Kim.
Is there a, a stable? Is there a, 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 Ken?
There's a corral and a, and a lean-to basically, not, a, 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 a pretty substantial lean-to. It's, and it's not terribly big. It's a well-built shelter.
Is that on the site plan?
Yes.
I must have overlooked it. I'm sorry. I, I don't know how I missed that.
Okay, other questions? A good one, Steve, I could catch. Okay, so because it's eight eighteen already, I'm gonna ask a deferral of the topic of whether we vote to have a public hearing and set the date until after we see where we are with our two upcoming public hearings. We have sixty-one participants, including ourselves, a forty-seven attendees. I don't know if those two public hearings will go to the next month, depending on how many people are here to speak. So I do not want to put us in a position where we have three public hearings happening in parallel. That is an unnecessary burden, an undue burden on this board. Cause I don't need a motion for that, but that's what I'm, I'm gonna ask you to take a, take a vote on this after the two public hearings. Does anyone violently oppose that approach? Okay, thank you for your appreciation. So we're gonna hold that, Glenn, until we get through the, the next topic.
Okay.
So, speaking of the next topic, uh, and Jamie Copeland is making a comment. I'm not sure what to do with that. We're not having public comments yet on uh, other topics, but let's, let's do the CRS. And I think Kelly, you should read the CRS continuation note on, uh, the public hearing, please, so we can begin and open it up to the public.
Sure. Phillips Town Planning Board Public Hearing, August twenty, twenty twenty. The Planning Board of the Town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold the public hearing on Thursday, August twentieth, twenty twenty, starting at seven thirty PM via Zoom to consider the following application. CRS International, Inc., twenty seven sixty-one Route nine. The applicant is seeking site plan approval for the construction of a two thousand, or twenty thousand, three hundred and forty square foot warehouse slash office structure in order to expand the applicant's current apparel warehouse distribute, distribution business currently located at thirty twenty-seven Route nine at J Cox Road. The property involved in the application concerns the former MHCP self-sourced site along the west side of NYS Route nine between Lane Gate Road and NYS Route three oh one, which never developed. An access driveway into site from New York State Route nine was previously constructed, as well as pre-cast concrete blocking retained wall along the frontage and along a portion of the north side of the lot. The Route nine access will be completely reconstructed in order to provide suitable access, um, egress for tractor trailers, man, um, maneuver, maneuverability, um, for the development of the site and will require highway work permit from the New York State Department of Transportation. Further, Putnam County Department of Health approval must be obtained for the onsite well and SSTs proposed to service the premises. At said hearings, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies of the application plat map and other related materials may be seen in the office of the Planning Board and the Public Department, Office of Dahlia House, two-seater street, Cold Spring, behind the town hall. If you would like to attend the Zoom meeting, please email kmcintyre@phillipstown.com, request login information before seven PM on August twentieth, twentieth, twenty twenty, dated, uh, at Phillips Town, New York, this sixteenth date of July twenty twenty. Neil Zuckerman, Chairman.
All right, well, thank you for that, Kelly, it is definitely past seven o'clock on that night, so let's open it up for commentary.
I'm going to, oh, I'm going to take the screen, hear my screen again.
Glenn, I'm not sure you need to re-present, given that we, unless something's changed since last time, but I think, I mean, you could, but I think we're just, we just need to hear the public, I know it's Steve or Ron, you think we need to have Glenn reopen the commentary?
Unless there's something new that Glenn wants to add, I mean, it's the applicant's application, if he feels the need to, I'd certainly defer to him, but I don't think the board would require a continued public hearing.
Well, I, I'll go out, whichever way you want, we've made several changes, we've no, not made any changes to the basic plan of how it operates, we have addressed several of the issues, some of the details on the site plan that, that you'd asked for, we have had extensive work done with regard to the intersection, which was of some, some concern, and we've had some renderings prepared, so you could get a more better visual sense of what it's going to look like. So we have the traffic engineer here to speak, we have, if, and we have the landscape architect, and we have the architect, so I, I'll do it any way you want, but should I just put up the basic site plan, and, and then as things go ahead, I can move, move it to one thing or another, if you have specific?
Yeah, Glenn, I guess I'd say, if there's new things you want to share, it's great, you have your traffic engineer who did the study, there's new things to share that'll be useful for the public to hear, that'd be great, but the purpose now is to hear primarily the public, so if there's nothing new, you.
I'll run through it very, I'll run through my part of it very quickly, and then I'll ask them to each make, each make a comment, and hopefully I, I won't foul this up. This can come down. Just to say.
No, it's, it's.
Up one. I'm just going, I'll go through this one very quickly. You. So, properties on Route 9, this is just an overview, it'll show you the building, it shows you the circulation around the building, shows you some idea of what the landscaping might be, you see a bunch of red lines coming through there, those are the wheel, those are the tracks that the vehicles that, that this WB67 vehicle will make through the site, I'm not going to go into that with any detail, Mr. Canning is, I believe he's online, he's here, should be able to speak to that, but they demonstrate that that's the case. I'm just going to go quickly to another, another slide. I think we, I should say, we responded to most of Mr. Gainer's comments, we are still working on it, on his, on the SWIP single page, table eight left. This basically shows more of the detail, it's, it's more the engineering drawing, retaining wall along, along the edge of the driveway, again, all of, several of the dimensions that Mr. Gainer wanted, or have been added, notes have been added, we've tried to respond as, as much as we could possibly respond. We did get a letter from, that we submitted from the Health Department, that basically said that our fields were going to be adequate, but they're going to look seriously at our well, because we, we do have, it's a, there's a real term for it that I can't say, but it's a privately owned public water supply, because more than 30 people will be using it, more than 25 people will be using, will be using about 30 people. John Canning's out there, I'm going to ask him if he would just take a minute, this is number four, and I want to go to page. I'm going to flip through the pages, and it's, that's not working. As you can see, it's quite an extensive report, we took, he took traffic counts, he measured the site distance.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's been made available to the public, I know the board has it, I don't know, Kelly, do you know if the public, this document has been available to the public?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so Mr. Canning is asking for access to speak, Cecilia, I wonder if you can un, to make it, him available, John Canning, who of the traffic study firm?
I just did that for you.
Sorry, Kelly, thank you, Kelly.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to appear before you. Last month, some of my colleagues had to step in for me, and they explained some of the issues that we were looking at, from a traffic and safety perspective, since that time, we submitted a traffic impact assessment to you dated July 28, and in that assessment, we provided a number of items of information. The first one was some documentation from New York State DOT, which demonstrates that US Route 9 in this vicinity is designated as an access highway, which in DOT parlance means that you can drive 53-foot trailers on it, which are the largest trailers that you see on the road, and the largest trailers that will visit this site. So we just wanted to confirm the suitability of Route 9 for this type of vehicle. We also provided traffic volume information, which is summarized in Table 1 and Table 2 of our report for the morning peak hour and for the afternoon peak hour. We scraped this information from the New York State DOT's website, they have a traffic data viewer, it indicates that in the busiest hour, which is the PM, there are approximately 1,250 cars passing the site, about 67 trucks, and about 27 trailers. We determined how much traffic the warehouse and office space would generate using information contained in the Institute of Transportation Engineers publication, Trip Generation Manual, basically, it's a compendium of surveys of similar type facilities. We based on the 30 employees, which was a higher number than if you just used a straight gross square footage, so that's conservative, and it's projected that the facility would generate 21 trips in the AM peak hour, 20 trips in the PM peak hour, and 18 or 19 will be cars, and just one vehicle in the busiest hour will be a large truck, and one will be a small truck, based on that data. And the net increase in traffic associated with this project at this portion of Route 9 will be less than 1%, basically, because when the cars come out, some of them go north and some of them go south. So that's the volume of traffic that will be added to Route 9, and how Route 9 is a suitable road. We wanted to make sure that the site driveway design was adequate to safely accommodate all of these vehicles making the turning movements, so we went out to the site, we took some field measurements, we did speed studies, and we determined that the operating speed, or the 85th percentile, is 52 miles per hour in the northbound direction, and 49 miles per hour in the southbound direction. The 85th percentile speed is what is used for design purposes, I could get into the explanation of it, but it's a conservative number, and we used 52, which is what we observed, and we used 50 miles per hour in the northbound, or in the southbound direction, which is the posted speed limit, it was one higher than the design speed. So we looked at site distances, and we noted when we were out there that there is one tree just off the edge of the roadway at the north end of the property that would need to be removed to provide adequate sightlines, and then there are a couple of bushes or shrubs, I don't know, I'm not a landscape architect, so I don't know how best to describe them, on the east side of the road to the south of the site that would need to be removed. Our site distance analysis is summarized in Table 3. Basically, it shows that for intersection site distance, which is to allow vehicles to turn out and accelerate and not cause through traffic to slow down much, you need 575 feet of site distance to the left and 555 to the right, we have 710 feet to the left and 840, 710 feet to the right and 840 to the left. Stopping site distance is the site distance required, if a motorist comes upon an emergent situation and they have to stop unexpectedly, that's a shorter distance, because you can stop quicker in an emergency than just slowing down when somebody's pulling out. So the requirement is 450 and 425 feet, and we have the same 710 and 840 feet, so with the removal of this one tree and a couple of bushes, there will be adequate sightlines at the site driveway. We also provided truck maneuvering plans, which basically showed how the largest vehicle to visit the site, WB67, which is a tractor with a 53-foot trailer, would be able to turn into the site in one fluid movement, when approaching from the north, approaching from the south, would be able to circulate around the site, access to loading dock and leave, and then turn to the north or turn to the south. So in conclusion, based on the evidence that we have provided, it's our opinion that the site has access to a suitable road, the driveway has been designed to safely accommodate all traffic, and the volume of traffic generated by the project is not significant enough to cause a significant traffic impact on the roadway. One minor issue, I know in reading through the minutes in the correspondence, some of the residents were concerned that the impact, the impact this project might have at the intersection of 301 with Route 9, it's, the driveway is 1,800 feet south of 301, so by the time vehicles traveling to or from this site reach 301, they'll be indistinguishable from any other vehicles on the roadway at that point, and they'll cause a minimal increase in delays at that location. So that's the new information that we have provided to you in written format, we were happy to do that, and I am happy to answer any questions that you or the public may have. Thank you.
So, so I'm going to ask the public to go first, because this is a continuation of a public hearing, then I'll come to the, our board members, then myself, and go from there, so let's turn it over to the public, please, for any comments. Do we have anyone from the public, Kelly, comment?
Nobody has raised their hand. Oh, wait a minute, we do have one. Madeline Ray. Madeline, can you hear?
Miss Ray.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, Ms. Ray, could you please just state your name, and, which is obviously in front of us, but, and then go ahead.
Sure. My name is Madeline Ray, I live in Garrison, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak about this, and for posting all these in the newspaper, I read the newspaper to see what the Planning Board is doing, so I appreciate you all always taking the time to keep us informed. I was taken by what Board Member Connor said about looking into the future today, tonight, earlier, and, you know, you all have a difficult role, because you do have to crystal ball every decision you make, because your decisions last a lifetime, you have to look 10 years, 50 years, and you have to ask yourself also, is this good for the people of Phillips Town? And putting myself in your shoes and listening to all of this, my crystal ball says this is not good for the town of Phillips Town. And it, it will triple the size of trucks, listening to the gentleman that just spoke about the size of these trucks, the largest tractor trailers are going to be in the heart of Phillips Town. The corridor of this Route 9, I don't need to tell you all, it's just one lane back and forth, north and south, but that, that corridor of Route 9 is the main drag that takes people from Garrison to Phillips Town Center in Cold Spring, that, that's the drag, there's a restaurant there, and the museum, we just heard from the gentleman that, that did the museum, Magazino, that's where this warehouse that's going to usher in 53-foot tractor trailers, the largest, in and out, all day long, and you can, I just don't believe that having an old warehouse with all those tractor trailers, then putting in this massive distribution center is tripling our amount of trucks, trucks that will slow down traffic, trucks that slow down traffic, because they have to go in and out of a driveway, and when other trucks are waiting to go in and out of the driveway, their diesel engines are idling, and the amount of noise that will make at the museum and the surrounding area, not to mention idling diesel trucks from 53-foot trailers, what it'll do to our air pollution, and it's all fine and well when the trees, the leaves are on the trees, but once those trees go down, the smell and the sound is going to carry all throughout Phillips Town. And looking further into the future, if we allow this massive truck distribution center in the heart of our town, in the heart of Garrison, other distribution centers are going to want to come. There is a lot of land for sale, and if we have one massive warehouse, we're going to have more and more, and it's just like the gentleman said, it's, it's a truck throughway to 84, and so they're going to keep coming. And we already have a distribution center, we have an area right off of 84, the Old Duchess Mall, there's tons of area there, it's truck-friendly, there are a lot of lanes, there's turning lanes, there's traffic lights, easy access to 84, and that's just 10 miles north. I don't think we need that kind of distribution center creeping south to Phillips Town, I do not think it needs to be extended. So, the, the traffic study I just learned was just submitted, and we haven't seen those traffic studies, and that needs to be seen to the public. I do not think this is good for Phillips Town, I think it'll be devastating to Phillips Town, and I think you need to reject this plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Kelly, do we have any other public speakers for CRS?
Yes, we have Tara Carroll. Ms. Carroll, are you there?
Hi, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I have to say, I'm a little bit caught by surprise, but maybe it's fate, I'm on the call to speak about scenic Hudson, however, my driveway is pictured in this survey. I live on Armando Road, my property backs up against this warehouse, I completely agree with everything that Madeline just said, I don't think this is in the core of Phillips Town's beliefs, it's not in.
How did I sound, too high pitched?
No, 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 I, I agree with everything you said, and I've been on the committee to update the Phillips Town comprehensive plan for the last three years, and this type of property is not what Phillips Town intends to have raw, open space turned into. This is surrounded by homes, I have not seen the traffic survey except for tonight, my husband also has strong opinions about this property, but even though it's posted in the paper, we know that we're living in different times right now, people aren't talking about things out and about in public, he did not know that this was a public hearing tonight, he was told by somebody that it was not a public hearing, that this was just being reviewed. So I just don't think that this has had enough exposure to people who live around the area, and that the traffic survey hasn't been made accessible to everyone, and I just don't think that it's time right now to, to be able to make an opinion on this by the board.
All right, thank you, Ms. Carroll. Kelly, do we have any other public speakers?
No, we do not.
So can I just confirm, Kelly, because there's a, I just want to reiterate, the Kim Lee Horn study that was in our package this month, that Mr. Canning is the author of, has that been, what's been the distribution at for the public's accessibility of that document?
When they, when they're the big forums or big maps, they don't get posted on the website, because we don't have any way to scan them in, to go onto the Phillips Town website.
And did we, and was this shared, I don't recall this being shared at the last board meeting when we discussed the public hearing, and I was not at the previous meeting, so I don't know, was this probably, so I shared before, does anyone know?
The traffic study was just submitted, it was completed in between the two meetings, but I believe, I believe that we submitted a CD with all of this stuff electronically.
Yes, but it's not been presented to the public until tonight.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, let me turn to board members, let me turn to board members for their questions. Let me turn to board members for their questions. Raise your hand, please. I see Heidi, you unmuted first, so let's let Heidi go first. She's, right, Heidi, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I, I wanted to just raise some concerns I have with the, the Kimley Horn traffic study. Um, which uh, just doesn't, which um. Finds, for example, that the traffic in this location um, is either. Add or below the, the, um, the speed limit. And um, and that's based on a few observations or a few days of observation at any rate between July twenty-eighth. And twenty twenty and August first, twenty twenty. Um, and then, and the traffic study tell, uh, indicates the time periods in which the observations were made. I, I don't know. Um, you know, how exactly this, these types of observations are recorded. Um, and that's, uh, I don't, I'm not sure that's made clear, although it does say that they're automatic, so I'm assuming it's some sort of machine that records the um, the speeds. Uh, uh, but I will say that um, the, the, uh, this. This report on the speeds doesn't comport with what the neighbors have said about the speeds of traffic at this location. Um, in our prior, uh, the prior portion of the public hearing. And doesn't, is not consistent with, with what I myself observed on numerous occasions of driving in this area on nine. Um, and I'm wondering if uh, either there's something that was um, unusual perhaps about these dates of observation. Or whether the applicant would like to do a, to expand the number of observations so that. We get something that's a little more realistic. I think it's pretty unrealistic to report that. Traffic is going below the speed limit at this spot. When uh, I mean, that, that, that is strange credulity, in my opinion. Um, and uh, and you know, maybe it's some sort of um. Something unusual about this time period having to do with the, the um. Uh, the coronavirus or something with respect to the amount of traffic on the road at that time or something that's. Uh, unusual, but I, I, i- in my opinion, unless the applicant wants to. Uh, kind of uh, provide some additional observations or kind of explain how it's possible that. Um, that these observations are realistic. Uh, and it, and kind of take into account what the neighbor, neighbors have said about their actual day-to-day experience of what the traffic. Speeds are at this location and in, um, I think we should request an independent traffic study, so. I'm, I would await the applicant's uh, response to that. I don't know that the applicant has included any observations from the neighbors. Um, perspectives as well, where we actually heard from neighbors that they can, they have a lot of trouble leaving their driveways and. And um, that's much more consistent with what I've observed on nine at that location, that it's, it's, you know. My worry is that when anybody stops uh, to make a turn or for any reason at that spot, cars just whiz around. And it creates a very dangerous situation. There's very little traffic enforcement uh, there. And that, those are my concerns. I, I take the safety concerns very, very, very seriously. I think we heard some very forceful testimony from the neighbors. At the last um, portion of this hearing, and I'm very concerned about those safety issues.
And Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Heidi. Uh, John, do you want to say something in response to what Heidi has asked?
Uh, yes, absolutely. Uh, thank you, Ms. Wendell. Um, uh, obviously, I take safety um, very seriously as well. That's my stock and trade and I'm responsible for. The work that I do and I, you know, people place their trust in me and, and um. Um, and that's very important to me that I make sure I get it right. Um, the speeds are documented by putting road tubes across the street and they're connected to a machine. And there's, the tubes are a couple of inches apart, and then depending on how fast the wheels go over are the, the time between them that records the speed. Uh, we recorded fifty-seven thousand um, vehicles going across this location. And there was a wide range in speeds. Some of the speeds were up as high as, I see one here was between seventy-one and seventy-five. Uh, on, on this day. Um, but the vast majority of them were down around the fifty mile an hour mark. Uh, I would point out that in the southbound direction, you're coming up the hill. So uh, depending on the vehicle that's coming up the hill, some are slower, some are faster, and because it's a two-lane road. You can really only go as fast as the slowest vehicle in front of you. Um, you know, I'm confident that our numbers are accurate and correct. I'm uh, not opposed to the board retaining somebody to fact-check them because I stand by my numbers and I'm not opposed to. Um, doing the exercise again, just to confirm if the board is concerned in that regard. Um, but as I indicated, uh, I am confident that the, the, the data is correct and accurate and the speeds. Uh, the site distances that we're providing are significantly greater than the site distances that are mandated based on these speeds.
Can I ask a follow-up question, Mr. Cannon?
Of course.
Um, thank you for that answer. I was wondering if um, you ever. Include as part of your traffic study, not just the measurement of the speeds, but some human observations of how the traffic responds to. Uh, for example, if there is a car that slows, a truck that slows, what happens to the other cars? Do the other cars just whiz around it through the, along the sides? Uh, I mean, it, one issue at that area might be that it's more than just the speeds that are at issue. First of all, it does seem like many people speed, but it may be in part that some speed, some slow, but. The traffic just is forced through the, the, the narrow. Uh, highway regardless of how it has to make it through essentially. It, 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 yes, arguably, people have to go the speed of the slowest car, but they don't necessarily because it's. It's, I think it's easy to observe that cars in fact go around whoever's slowing. They just go around and they're, and that creates a lot of dangers. Yeah, on the highway, on nine, uh, which all of us, I think, have, have perceived. So I'm just wondering if there's anything besides just putting, just measuring the raw speed, but also measuring other potential dangers that the. The neighbors may be um, experiencing that causes it to be difficult for them to exit their driveways. I, you might have heard at the last public hearing that one of the neighbors said it takes fifteen to twenty minutes already for him to exit his driveway.
Well, you know, I recognize that, you know, as I said, we, we counted fifty-seven thousand vehicles in, I think it was four days. So there's no doubt about it that Route nine is the main drag. It's a busy roadway. And uh, when you're trying to turn out of your driveway at like eight o'clock in the morning or five o'clock in the evening. You might have to wait for, for uh, you know, a minute, maybe even two minutes to get a gap in the traffic stream that you can turn into or out of. Um, that's there today, and this project is going to increase traffic by about. Twenty-nine vehicles per hour, which is, I think, a two percent increase. And the number of trucks, it's, it's going to be of the largest trucks, it's going to be one and, one per hour at most, which is a nominal increase. So um. The conditions that are out there will not be changed materially by the application. We would be happy to, to go out and observe. Um, a, a local unsignalized intersection to see how motorists behave and see if, if, if the motorists in this part of Phillips Town are. Um, following vehicle and traffic laws or are in some way. Trying to get, get a fast one on everybody. Um, if that would be helpful, we want to make sure that you're comfortable with this application. I know I am, but if we can provide more data for you to. Uh, to determine that, we'd be happy to do it.
Okay, Heidi, I don't want to. Heidi, Heidi, I'd like to let other board members get in here. So let's, let's, we've got, we've got a long agenda, so other board members would like to ask questions, please. So let's go to Laura, who's, Laura, you go first and Kim.
Um, thank you. Um, so I just have a quick question um, regarding the traffic study, and I know I keep asking this, but uh, you know, no one's ever actually really gave me an answer. So the traffic study is based, and your numbers are actually based on the current plan. So if I read this correctly, you're basically saying that it's a nominal increase because it's one point five percent. To the current, assuming that it, you're taking it from two thousand and eleven to twenty twenty. My question is, is that, is that at maximum productivity of that site? Or is that at, you know, at the moment that it opens, which is a current increase based upon like what they currently have today?
Sure, so it, it's actually both because, well, I believe it's both. They have indicated that they have about thirty employees and that's what they're going to bring to the site. So Glenn, can you correct me on that?
I think that we have, um, we've. That's a conservative number, actually. We really, the, the owner has said at twenty-five. Um, we talk, we talk about thirty, but thirty is the maximum number.
Okay, so, so we did our traffic study based on thirty employees, which is the maximum number, and, and it sounds like. When they open, they'll be relatively close to the maximum. Uh, I would point out that that's actually a large number of employees for a warehouse, because in, in looking at the data. I also looked at how much traffic, uh, an eighteen, what is it, eighteen thousand square foot warehouse would generate. A twenty thousand square foot warehouse would generate just based on the square footage. And the data said, well, a typical warehouse of twenty thousand square feet would generate five or six trips. And I said, well, that's quite a low number. I'm not comfortable with that, particularly because I know there's thirty employees. So I looked at the data for employees and that said that it would generate twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one trips. So that's at, at the maximum. If that answers your question, Ms. O'Connell.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
It kept, Kim, next.
Okay, uh, so the first question for Mr. Cannon. Did, in any, in all of this um, traffic study, did you consider the fact that across the street directly, there is um, a manufactured housing? Park, I guess we, with thirty, at least thirty dwellings in it, and that the. Did that traffic that comes out of there um, figure into this?
Yes, it did. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, it's first street, I believe, is, is the access to the um, facility. Um, and the traffic that was going in and out of there would be factored into the numbers that we got from the DOT, because they're on the roadway today.
Okay, okay, so that's question number one. Um, question number two is, I don't, I don't know if you've looked at the landscape plan. But it seems that although you're asking to remove bushes and a big tree. On the landscape plan, there are three trees that are going to go really close to the roadway, so I'm just wondering if these trees on the landscape plan are actually going to end up being blocked. You know, blocking the site distance?
Uh, I don't believe they are. Typically, what you do when you put in, um. Um, I guess, when you put trees in your house, when, when trees grow on the side of the road, they just grow all crazy, right? When you put a tree in on your house, you put it in, it's in a bag, it's usually pruned up and, and the. Canopy, the bottom of the canopy is usually about six feet off the ground. And then it, it grows and you kind of maintain it like that. And so that, you can then look under that. I would recommend that the, the trees not be placed any closer than twelve feet to the roads, the trunks don't become an issue. But uh, I'm confident that with proper maintenance, as with, with everybody's home, it won't be an issue. And, and I think it's in the interest of the owner and the operator to maintain the front of their property so that it operates safely.
So if the tree, so if it's under, if six feet and under is, you know, has good sight distance, what about the guys who are up in the trucks when they're at the height of the tree?
Well, they're, they're, they're seven point five feet and they're looking down and they're probably fifty or sixty feet away, so.
Okay, and when these, these trees are mature, they're going to be tall. Um, I don't know, it wasn't indicated on the plan, Glenn. What exactly the trees in the front were going to be?
So then. Uh, I think there's an inventory of those trees, Kim, on the, on the landscape.
No, no, it's there, but it doesn't say all, it doesn't, there's no legend that tells you what shape corresponds to which tree, and there's no, there are numbers on the trees, but there aren't numbers on the legend. So I couldn't tell um, if they were pine trees, if they're oak trees, if they're pin oak trees. So I just would like a little more information about that, so that.
It looks like they're.
Things that are going to block it.
It looks like they're MA six, which I'm guessing is a maple. Um, and three OK fours, which I'm guessing is oak, and I shouldn't guess frankly, but.
But that's.
I beg your pardon?
That's, that's our, that you, you assumed correctly.
Okay, and I just scaled off the trees. They're about twenty feet from the white line.
Okay. Okay, so that's, I'm just making sure that that's.
Yep, it's important.
All right, um, and then the, another question I have is, um, when I look at your red lines that show the different turning radiuses for the trucks. Um, in some cases, it looks like they might have to back up a little bit or something because it doesn't, it's not as, like, right inside the entrance, and I don't know how to describe this. There's, it, it sort of goes like this, and I'm just wondering what that represents as far as.
Uh, so there's, there are two types of lines on, on these drawings. Basically, the green lines are um. The corners of the vehicle. So you know when you turn a sharp turn in your car. Uh, and you're close to the curb, sometimes the corner of your vehicle will go over the curb, but your wheel doesn't because the front of the vehicle sticks out a little bit. So the green lines are the, the front and rear corners, and then the red lines are the wheels. And if you don't see the red lines, it means they're under the green line. So when you're driving straight, the red lines are under the green lines. So uh, when, when we did the turning templates. The corners of the vehicles do pass over the curb at the, the pinch points, but they, the wheels do not, so they won't have to back up.
Okay, but this is the red line that I'm talking about where it has, you know, like a squiggle like this. I'm just wondering what that represents.
Well, let me just see where I can find, I'm looking at the three plans that I've provided.
Right within the entrance.
Yeah, but what it typically means is you're turning the wheel a little bit. So you're, when you're going in, you're, oh, uh, I, I'll tell you what that is. That's the transition, because I just found it. That's the transition from seeing the front wheels to seeing the back wheels. So um, if you look at. Um, you see what drawing this is, the right turn out drawing. Um, you, you basically see a vehicle comes down uh, this, on the, on the east side of the building. Oh, what did I do? I just lost my sheet. It comes down on the east side of the building and then it swings to the left to go out to the driveway, and you can see the red line in a big arc. And then, just as you said, just before it, it's in the middle of the driveway, just before it hits, hits the street, then all of a sudden it goes right. Um, that, that, what appears to be going right is actually the rear wheels. When they follow ten seconds beyond, because there's a transition across. And I'm sorry that it's so complicated to explain, but that's basically a transition from the rear to the uh, front wheels, and it doesn't mean that your wheels are sort of suddenly turning like that.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Um, so I guess.
Another question, oh.
That's it for me. Uh, one more thing.
Okay, but.
I'm sorry, Neil. Um, in the documents, it says that CRS is going to cease operations at the old site. And I seem to remember that when we talked about this way back when, maybe June, maybe before that. Um, they said they were going to continue to run both sites. Do you know anything about that, Glenn?
Uh, no, I don't. I, I don't know if um. Eric Maravell is on or not, but I, I, I do not know. I, I can check.
It's just, it, it says that in the document.
Yeah, I, and that was my understanding that they were going to cease operations on, in the, the other, the other place. The other place has got a traffic problem and that's, that's.
No, I understand, but I, they did say when, I, I think we asked about that a while ago and they said that they were going to operate both. So maybe it was a transition period.
I may be wrong, I don't remember.
Okay, that's it for me.
Okay, other board members' questions? All right, I have three questions, uh, and they're all about the traffic study, and I will tell you, my, I, my, my, my sense at this moment is that I do not believe the public has had enough. Opportunity to look at the traffic study. Uh, and I may be inclined to ask us to continue this public hearings. I just want to state that upfront while I still have the mic in front of me. I do have three questions, Mr. Cannon, about this uh, report.
Yes.
One is on page uh, two, when you talk about the trip generation summary of uh, the project trips. I would like to understand from your study, you assume one tractor trailer project trip in that one hour block. Of seven, eight, and one from four to five.
Yes.
I would like to understand, and I, I, whether, where, where you got it from is not relevant to me at this moment. What I'd like to understand is how the, what would it there be if there was a material increase? In that number, if one went to four or five. I'd like to see the net result of different levels. Of trucks that come during the rush hour. Because unless we're able to, and I think it's going to be very difficult to limit the number of trucks that come per hour or to strongly enforce such a thing, we could state it. I'd like to know the implications for having more tractor trailers visit during that period of time. And that's not, you may not be able to answer it now, but I. And that's not, you may not be able to answer it now, but I need you to catalog a couple of these questions, because I think it matters, because we don't know. I don't know if we can limit them to an hour, we may state it, but that may not be what happens. And to Heidi's point about safety, I think it's important.
Yeah.
So, so Dennis, you looked quizzical about that question, so if I'm not being clear, I can.
I understand your question, I'm just thinking about some of the other conditions that we're, we have to contend with, and I'm assuming that DOT has to put the stamp of approval on that entry, so.
Yes.
Well, that's a good question, so let's, that's a good question. Uh, my sec, my second question is, uh, I'm going to table number three, the site distance analysis. I'd like to know, you use the eighty-fifth percentile of speed, it says here. And, because I'm, it's clearly more than the, the posted speed limit, because there, there's no way that people are driving less than, than the, than the fifties. So, or less rarely. I'd like to know the implications of the stopping distance. If people were driving at the ninetieth percentile of speed and the ninety-fifth percentile, I'd like to see the implications because I actually think we've gotta work towards a, the highest end of the speed band, given what Heidi is saying earlier, I think it's fair. And I'd like to see the implications for stopping if people are going faster.
Okay, I, I, I can work that up. I can't give it to you on the spot, obviously.
No, and then I'm not, and I'm not holding you, sir, to that, that right now. And then the third question is, you state in the paragraph below table three, the one that starts with according to A A S H T O. You state in the, uh, second sentence, existing foliage on the opposite side hinders the view of a driver exiting the driveway and looking to the right. And then it continues in the next sentence, if this foliage is trimmed, if this foliage trimmed and maintained, existing motors will have seven or ten feet of sight distance. I'd like to know if it's not trimmed or maintained, which I'm sure right now it is not trimmed and maintained, because we're at that apex of the summer, I'd like to know what the site distance is now, if it's not seven, ten, if it's not trimmed and maintained.
Okay.
Because I will tell you, this board has literally no control unless I ask Neil Tom to take out his weed whacker. We have no way of enforcing foliage trimming, um, and I think that's a pretty fair statement. So those are my three questions.
Right, um, I, I, I will get you that number. I will say, kind of the way this works is, this is, uh, this is a state highway. I'm not entirely sure who has the responsibility for trimming the vegetation. I suspect that it's the DOT, uh, because um, if, if there's an accident, it's their road and they'll be liable, but I can, I can confirm that. But basically what happens is somebody goes through probably twice a season with, uh, like a lawnmower that's on an arm that's attached to a tractor and then they just buzz the side of the road. And at some point.
My point, my, my point, John, is I don't, I don't really care who does it. What I'm trying to figure out is if it's not done, what's the site distance?
No, I, I, I'll give you that number, Mr. Chairman, I, and I understand that. But what, what I'm saying is at some point, somebody decided that this little shrub was, uh, was more than they could deal with and it, they just left it. And now it's like twelve feet tall. It could be taken out in an afternoon and then the next time they come through, they just mow it like the rest of it. So it, you know, it's, it's easy to fix, but I will get you the site distances.
Thank you, sir. Now Kelly, you told me there's a couple more members of the public have commentary.
Um, yeah, Eric Bear, uh, Baraveld would like to comment.
All right, Mr. Baraveld, please.
Uh, hello, everybody. Hopefully you can hear me. Uh, yes, I'm a representative from CRS International. Uh, it's our family business. Um, wanted to just address, uh, a couple of points. Um, I'm happy to field some questions or, uh, speak to individual members of the public. If they, uh, if they wanna have a conversation. Um, Kim, first, uh, yes, to clarify, uh, we will be maintaining both facilities, so really the intention of this, uh, is to alleviate um, some space constraints in our current facility. Um, we don't expect, uh, now kind of speaking towards the, the traffic patterns. Um, and Laura's comments, we don't, uh, expect or anticipate, or this is not part of a business plan of, uh, dramatic expansion of our business. Um, it's really meant to alleviate and be able to operate both of our, uh, divisions uh, more efficiently, uh, and to have some more space and consolidate some space. Uh, we currently have some off-site storage locations, um, and to be able to bring things into, you know, I guess, under one roof is the best way to describe it. So, um, it's not our intention for a dramatic expansion in, uh, traffic or business. Um, you know, the traffic will be split between the two different locations. Um, and that's really what our intention is, is to be able to have, uh, a new location and operate our businesses a little bit more efficiently. Um, and on our own facilities. So, um, I think that's about it. Uh, I wanted to mention also, you know, I know we've, we have been planning and speaking about fifty-three foot tractor trailers uh, coming in and out. Um, it, it's not something that will, uh, increase, um, from our current location. Uh, at this location, we expect, um, and I don't know that this has, has made it into, uh, the documents you received. Um, but sort of very generally speaking, uh, two to three fifty feet through trailers at this new location per day. Um, one in the mid-morning, um, probably after rush hour, um, and one at the end of the day, which is our, you know, FedEx pickup. Um, and the remaining trucks will be smaller twenty-six foot, you know, box trucks, um, delivery trucks and then, uh, smaller, you know, FedEx and UPS kind of residential trucks. So, uh, I, you know, I can hear the public sentiment, uh, and the concern that, you know, there's tractor trailers coming in and out every hour. Uh, that's certainly not our intention. You know, we've been in Phillips Town for, uh, I think at least, at least twenty years. Um, you know, many of our employees live in the area, uh, I live in the area. And, uh, certainly, you know, part of this plan is to alleviate, um, the concerns at our current facility uh, while, you know, allowing our, our businesses to operate and, and, you know, I guess thrive, um, in this area. So, uh, you know, with that, if there are any questions, um, I'm happy to share my email. Uh, it's Eric, E R I, E R I C at C R S I N T dot net. Um, feel free to get in touch with me. I'm happy to meet, uh, in public at a, at a safe distance, uh, if you'd like to speak. Um, or I'm happy to set up a Zoom, um, to address any sort of concerns that the public may have. Um, you know, like I said, you know, we wanna do this the correct way, um, and make sure that, you know, we're, we're satisfying, you know, our needs, uh, as well as the needs of, of the general public, um, and try and maintain the best balance that we can. So with that, uh, I think I'm done, um, unless anybody has any questions for me specifically.
So, thank you, Eric. I'm, I'd like to, can you ask the public, and thank you for your comments, uh, public, any other public members, Kelly, that wanna comment?
Lawrence Smith.
Mr. Smith? You're on mute, go ahead, please.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes, yes.
I'm sorry, sorry. This is all, all new for me. What an education. I really appreciate all of your efforts. This is quite an amazing evening for me. It's sort of must-see TV, if I could say that.
Well, sir, then you need to go find a Netflix account somewhere.
Anyway, listen, I, I really do appreciate it. It's heartfelt. Uh, this is all new information for me. Uh, this, uh, development, twenty thousand square foot building on Route nine. My comment is really, I consider Route nine to be one of the most dangerous roads I've ever driven on. And I've, I've lived all around the country and I consider it to be an extremely hazardous road. And the reason for that is the truck traffic from the asphalt plant, from the sand and gravel operations, from the cement plants that are just north of us. And that traffic is enormous. Uh, what is going on on Route nine is a hazard to everyone who drives on that road. So the idea of introducing additional one percent, two percent, five percent, and thriving business, uh, to me is, uh, is crazy. So I, I just, I would never, uh, think that this is a good idea to increase truck traffic on Route nine. And, and I say that because I've, I've almost had several accidents coming around the corner to the asphalt plant, having to slam on my brakes to avoid, uh, trucks coming in and out of that facility uh, that are heavily laden, uh, started, what, zero to one or two miles per hour to cross two lanes of traffic to enter the highway. Uh, it's, it's an extremely dangerous road. Uh, the idea of adding more capacity to that road is, is, I think, a, a terrible idea. So that's my comment. It wasn't why I'm participating here in the meeting, but I, I had to toss my two cents, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Kelly, any other public speakers?
No, that's all.
Okay, so, so Steve and Ron, anything you wanna add at this point?
Well, you know, it's really more Ron's bailiwick than mine, but just an observation. I mean, the use is not up to this board. It's a permitted use. It's a matter of zoning. The question is in terms of how use would be conducted at the site. And, uh, there are other issues, of course, but the, the focus, I think, of the public hearing has been on traffic impacts, both adding vehicles to nine and the safety of the turning, you know, uh, ability of trucks into the entrance. Is the entrance designed properly? And of course DOT will have the final word on that, but, um, it's up to this board in the first instance to make sure that it's designed to this board's satisfaction, at least DOT, like I said, may have other ideas. So, uh, in terms of the design of the intersection, um, you know, I, I don't know that the traffic study spoke to that in any great detail. Again, Ron can, can tell you about the adequacy of the design and the intersection way better than I can, but um, that's an issue that I think still needs to be vetted a bit, whether you wanna hold this open for more public comment in regard to that or not. I mean, I'm getting that vibe from the board that you may wanna do that, but it's certainly a consideration, you know, in terms of the design of it. The other issue is the, um, amount of vehicles. And it hasn't, I don't think, been discussed in any great detail, but perhaps the applicant would be willing to limit the number of truck trips per hour or per day. That's the type of thing that could be incorporated into an approval as a condition. Yes, it presents enforcement problems, but in the event that, you know, there was, uh, a detectable uh, a degree of violations type thing they could be cited for, and if necessary, the town could get an injunction prohibiting, um, you know, uh, excessive vehicle trips. But I, I think perhaps the issue should be at least explored, whether the applicant would be willing to accept such a condition, and if so, to what degree.
Ron, thoughts?
Clearly, the, uh, two significant issues represent the, uh, potential traffic impacts to the car as well as the, uh, impacts of residential properties in the, uh, view shed that the project will present. Uh, there's additional technical information that I think has been raised tonight, as well as in, in my technical review that uh, their representatives will have to respond to. Uh, so that information will only come through a future meeting.
All right, so thank you for that, Ron and Steve. So here's, I propose, ladies and gentlemen, all board members. I believe since the traffic study was presented tonight and not as the earlier applications presentation, the public did not know ahead of time about the study. It was presented live. And I do believe there's been a number of questions asked of the study that Mr. Canning has to go back and do, that both Heidi and myself have asked of the study. I'd like to suggest we keep the public hearing open, allow the public to comment when, we'll start with Mr. Canning when we return next month to have him further explicate some of the commentary on the study, and let the public have one final say on the traffic situation, given the magnitude. Um, I don't know how people feel. I'm happy to take a, again, I can't recall, Steve, do you need a vote to keep the public hearing open?
Um, it's a good idea to have it. I mean, you usually would either call for a vote to close it or, you know, a vote to keep it open. I mean, if you don't do anything, it stays open.
So I'd like to, I think it's fair to take the sentiment of the board and I'll make it formal. I'd like a motion to keep this public hearing open for the addressing of the issues that have been laid out. Can I have a motion, please?
I'm moved.
All right, Heidi's, all right, second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so, uh, Glenn, Mr. Canning, and Mr., um, I'm sorry, I didn't catch Eric's last name, but we will, we will continue this public hearing next month. Kelly, we will notice it again, as we have done, and we will invite the public for a third round. I apologize for the duration, but this is important business, as clearly, uh, Ms. Ray and others have cited today, and I think we all owe it to the public for this important issue. It is now nine sixteen. Um, we're gonna try and get into this pub, second public hearing. Kelly, if you give the very abridged version of the, uh, citation, we will begin it, uh, and this is for Slope Line. I see we have a, we have forty-seven attendees. There is a incredibly high likelihood that A, we will not hear from them all until we're all in bed. And B, we will be continuing into next month. I am willing to extend the time of tonight to nine forty-five, but that gives us only a half hour to hear these people. I'm also gonna ask Kelly, as we do at the MTA Board, to limit public commentary to two minutes each. That's a decently long amount of time, but it's not an atypical way of getting as many people to speak as possible. So I, I don't think I need a motion to do that, but I'd like, I hope everyone is okay with that as a matter of course, is not an atypical approach. So we're gonna do two minutes per speaker, and we're gonna see where we can get to, and I'm gonna call it quits at nine forty-five unless people feel like they wanna keep going. All right, so Kim, uh, Kelly, why don't you, uh, why don't you read us the very brief version, the citation, uh, for Slope Line? And we shall begin at the beginning.
Okay, Slope Line LLC nine, the Seaning Hudson Land Trust, three lot subdivision. The applicant is seeking subdivision approval of three lots, subdivision of parcel totaling seven hundred and sixty-five point seven acres surrounding the Lake Vahala Residential Community. The lot, the lots to be created involve the following parcels. Parcel A, five, five hundred and twenty point five acres, unimproved tract adjacent to the Duchess County boundary, which will be protected by conservation easement and eventually to be conveyed to New York State. Parcel B is a hundred and ninety-three point four acres, which is improved with small recreational structure and is to be conveyed to an HOA that will be comprised of, um, existing Lake Vahala property owners. Parcel C is a fifty-one point eight acres, which is improved with residential structures and outbuildings. Um, if and when it is conveyed by Slope Line LLC, it will be sold as a private lot and subject to a conservation easement.
Okay, uh, if I, if I may ask that any public speakers both state their name and their address, uh, so we can just get some standing in this conversation. And, uh, Kelly, who's first up?
Uh, Pamela Richardson.
Ms. Richardson, we asked you to keep your, oh, Glenn, do you wanna give commentary? I'm sorry.
Uh, she's going to do. She's with the applicant. Ms. Richardson.
Okay, but do we have anything, is there something new for the applicant needs to share? Is there something new about the plan since last shared?
No, I'm just gonna put up the picture.
Okay, I, I think Ms. Richardson, we have, we have a forty-seven members of the public to speak, now forty-three, I believe.
Neil, I'm sorry to interrupt. I apologize, but I think Ms. Richardson was going to speak to that outstanding issue regarding the, um, the state property and the use to which it was going to be put. I think that's important information for the public to have, if, if in fact she's going to address that. So if you could just afford her a minute or two, to, to, to chime in, I think would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank, thank you very much, Turner Gaba. Um, and thank you very much, members of the board, uh, for the opportunity to speak on this application again. Um, as Mr. Gaba has mentioned, we did want to address some comments that, uh, the board received at the last public hearing, um, both the state, uh, uses of the land and some other questions that were raised. Um, very, very briefly, I know that, um, Kelly spoke to this, but just to clarify, so Slope Line owns eleven hundred and seventy-eight acres of land. Only seven hundred and sixty-six acres are their land are subject to this application. The rema, the rest are unaffected. Um, the subdivision will result in re-distant ownership units and they're identified on the map as parcel A, which is approximately five hundred and twenty-five acres, which will be conveyed to New York State. Um, fifty acres approximately that will convey to, or that will remain with Slope Line. And a hundred and ninety-three acres, which is identified as parcel B on the map, um, which will be conveyed to the nearby Lake Vahala Community Association. Um, the LBCA ownership unit and the estate parcel will ultimately be permanently preserved by conservation easements that will limit the use of that land. And the land to be conveyed to New York State as a result of the subdivision will be combined with the remaining land of Slope Line to be added to the Hudson Highlands State Park Preserve. And that was a question that was raised at the last meeting. What would happen to the remaining? remaining acreage? By subdividing this land in this manner, we think we achieved several long-held community goals, um, including permanently protecting the land, and that's been identified by both the town and the state as significant for scenic and ecological values, and also providing the adjacent Lake Valhalla community with control over lands surrounding their community and that they have held important for a very long time, um, subject to a conservation easement. It'll also close a major gap in Hudson Highlands State Park Preserve to provide for conservation of one of the largest blocks of unfragmented forest in the southeastern New York State, um, under unified public agency management. So in response to the questions that were raised about the state's use of the land after conveyance, it's our understanding that the state intends to add the land that they will acquire to the state park preserve, but we do not believe that they have any plans currently to expand trails or parking areas or provide additional amenities. I also want to note that the state park adjacent is actually a park reserve, not a traditional state park, so it is limited to passive recreation uses. And I will note that I believe um, either the regional director of um, New York State Parks or the Hudson Highlands State Park Reserve Park Manager are on the call tonight, so if there's further clarification needed after my comments, um, they may be able to provide additional light. It's our understanding, there were questions raised about the roads and access to the property, and it's our understanding that the state intends to utilize existing roads for access to their land, and that will be limited to maintenance and emergency purposes. So again, we're not aware that they intend to create any new trails at this time. As for hunting, there was a question raised about that at the last meeting, and our understanding is that to the extent hunting is permitted in this area of the property, it will be consistent with other areas of the preserve um, in this vicinity, and there will not be firearms permitted to be used. I know that was raised as a, as a concern by a particular, by a community member. And then I just really wanted to note that the subdivision is consistent with and advances the goals and priorities of the town's open space plan. That was raised as a question as well at the last meeting. We did submit a letter to the planning board last week that went into some more detail about these issues, and I invite um, you know, any questions that the board may have about that. And so at this time, that's really all I wanted to say. I'm certainly available to speak to other questions if they are, if they are raised this evening, and um, you know, so I turn it back to the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Ron, did you want to say something? Go ahead.
Yeah, just, just want to understand things, just for the uh, board's understanding, are we correct that all three parcels will be protected in their entirety through conservation easement?
So the parcel B and parcel C will both be protected by conservation easement ultimately. Parcel A, because it is being conveyed to the state, to New York State Parks as part of the park preserve to be added to that land, will not be protected by a conservation easement because there are already restrictions in place on what the state may do with that land once they own it for that purpose.
But parcels B and C will be totally protected and not subject to any further uh, improvements?
Correct, with, with limited uses. I mean, a parcel B could have some very minor improvements to help the, that, that would be consistent with the existing improvements on that parcel, but it would not, first of all, nothing that would, um, if it required cycling approval, obviously, nothing that would require, would be able to be installed without cycling approval if that were appropriate under the zoning code. But anything, any structures on that land would be limited, very, very limited, and there would be very minimal improvements there. Again, consistent with the rustic improvements that already exist on that land.
I, let me just chime in for just a moment, Pam, if you might. Glenn Watson.
Sure.
I think there's a small area down by the beach that is actually not, that is actually not going to be within the bounds of the conservation easement.
Glenn, can you identify where the beach is on that plan?
If, on the plan, um, it's the, on the bottom part of the lake, the southeast portion of the lake, right under the word Valhalla.
Thank you.
It's just very small. Just a small area that my instructions are, will be not within the bounds of the conservation easement.
And that's an area that's already improved, again,
Correct.
With some other community amenities, and so it wouldn't be appropriate to put those under the conservation easement. But to, to be very clear, there is no, there, there is no opportunity for development of the land that was up the, the mountain towards the ridge line. There, there would be no further development for commercial or residential purposes. And, and the goal of this is really to maintain the status quo on this property, essentially.
Yeah. Love to open us up to the public, Kelly. Let's get, let's get in. Steve, you want to say something? Go ahead.
Just, just briefly, Pam, could you uh, just speak to, again, briefly, um, the assurances that you have, that parcel A that's going to the state is going to be used as parkland? Is there something in an offer of dedication? Is there something in a contract? I mean, how do you know that it's going to be subject to the protections that, you know, you're telling us it's going to be subject to?
So I would defer to OPRHP staff that's on the call, but my understanding is that once, well, there are two, two issues. First of all, there are um, both federal and state funds that are being utilized to purchase this property, and both of those funding sources have restrictions on how the property can be used once the money's been applied. And so the state is limited by those programs, um, which are specifically and expressly intended for conservation and recreation purposes. Additionally, my understanding is that once land is dedicated for park purposes under the OPRHP umbrella, um, which is what they do, right? It's the Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, they are bound to hold that land for that purpose and can't simply, you know, just on a whim decide that they no longer want to use it. They are required to go through certain statutory steps that would limit their ability to, um, to transfer the land or to put it to a different use.
And you mentioned the number of, of items that the state intended in regard to, for example, use of the roadways and things like that. What, what assurances do you have that the state is actually going to carry through on those intentions?
Well, I, our understanding is that the, I can't speak for the state's ultimate intentions of the property, but I can tell you that we have been told that at this time, there's no intention to develop any new codes, and we've worked very closely with OPRHP on this project, um, and expressed to us that their interest in accessing the property is off of, is that enter, off of Route nine D, I believe it is. But I would defer to, I believe Linda Cooper or Evan Thompson, um, who I believe are on, either or both of them are on the call.
And I think it would be helpful if the board could have a memo or something in writing, and perhaps a letter from the state in regard to its intentions, just to kind of button up this issue?
We can certainly ask them for that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we've managed to not get any members of the public in here yet, so with permission from our, my, Ron and Steve and everyone else, let, can we get some members of the public to speak? This is a public hearing. Kelly, can we have the first public speaker?
That would be Nancy Montgomery.
Nancy, go ahead, please. You're on mute, Nancy.
Sorry about that, I'm in a car. Hi, this is legislator Montgomery, Nancy Montgomery, Five Forest Lane, Cold Spring, New York. Tell me you can hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Thanks, uh, Phillips Town Planning Board for looking out for the, uh, my neighbors and the people of Lake Valhalla, and, and you know, especially to Mr. Gaynor and Mr. Gaba for their excellent requests. I think my question from last month has been answered because this was originally identified as a parcel being set aside for Lake Valhalla Homeowners Association, and now we're back to referring it to it as Lake Valhalla Civic Association. So I'm assuming that we don't have to become a homeowners association for this sale to go through. That's still an underlying question I have. And I just, I have a, a statement in response to the, to the project, um, and it's nice to hear that the planning board is ensuring that the concerns of my neighbors within and outside of Lake Valhalla will be addressed. I know there are a lot of questions, uh, some constituents have sent them to me. The acquisition of Lake Valhalla by an organization like Slope Line has been something that our local government and many residents have been hoping for, for over fifteen years. Lake Valhalla is a natural and cultural resource that has been under the threat of development for longer than the twenty years that I have lived there. The town created the Open Space Index. Lake Valhalla was the number one property placed on this index, ensuring the preservation and future acquisition was a top priority for policy planning and land use. This acquisition and subdivision accomplishes the goals set forth in the town's codes and land use planning initiatives. I hope that concerns will be addressed and that scenic Hudson, Slope Line, New York State Parks and the Phillips Town Planning Board will move forward in keeping with the codes and plans that we have worked so hard to put into place. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Kelly, who's next?
Um, Mickey Denner.
Mickey? Please just state your name and your address, please.
Our Mickey Denner, one thirty-three Skyline Drive, and that's Phillips Town.
I'm trying to keep a remarks to two minutes, please.
Absolutely. First, I quickly like to just thank the board for their work, uh, just maintaining Phillips Town. Um, I think we've heard some good information. I also have heard some great questions because there's still a lot that needs to be understood. Very quickly, Ms. Richardson, you talked about roads and access for maintenance. Could you identify where they are? Uh, and, and let me finish, and then you can, I'll get my two minutes out, and then you can respond. Uh, one other thing that, as you have been sharing information, it is your understanding or your organization's understanding, and at a point you also said that you could not speak for the state. So with those questions or memos that have been requested, I would also hope that the board would reach out directly to the state. Maybe they can come in and represent themselves to speak directly to what they expect to do with this land. I mean, it's been shared that, uh, the town has worked really hard to get this, uh, to maintain this land, all the things that's been done, um, uh, to maintain it, but I want to make sure that we're not put, uh, behind the eight ball that down the line, it's understanding turns around to be, well, in fact, something else is going to be happening. Uh, we know that there's a big issue right now with, uh, breakneck ridge, the parking, the garbage, the incredible amount of people, and I'm just looking forward to the board making sure that all the questions are asked and the proper representatives speak completely to what will happen as compared to just an understanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
So if I may, this is Pamela Richardson, just to respond to Mr. Denner's comments. Our understanding is that the maintenance and emergency access would be off of Highland Road, which is at the, I believe it's the southwestern side of the property, um, and that is, uh, already developed, and um, it, there's an area there that, that they've been talking about utilizing for maintenance and emergency access. Um, and just to get to legislator's, legislator Montgomery's point about the ownership unit that would be held, who would own the Lake Valhalla piece, um, the community association piece, that is not a contingency of, uh, the transaction. Uh, the, the association is able to purchase the property in whatever format they desire. That is not something that, that has been a contingency of any discussions.
Okay, let, let's keep going, and I, Ms. Ms. Richardson, if you can, I'd like to get the, the public through, please, and then we can maybe summarize the questions. We're never going to get through this if we're answering everybody's question with a multi-minute response, so if we can just keep letting the public get their comments in. So Ms. McIntyre, who's next, please?
Uh, Nat Prentis.
Muted. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Go ahead, Nat. Two, two minutes, please, name and address.
No, no problem, just a minute. I'd, I'd like to speak in favor of the application. The last twenty years, I've, I've spent a lot of time working on the comprehensive plan, so I really love it when a good plan with the right players and with the right motives that fulfill a goal specifically called for by that plan, namely the protection of a large portion of Schofield Ridge, is submitted. I hope that you will approve the application because it is completely aligned with the town's vision of its future. Thank you.
Thank you, Nat. Kelly, who's next?
Tara Carroll.
Hi, guys. Tara Carroll, again, I'm at fifty-nine Armando Road in Cold Spring. My husband and I own two businesses in the village, as well as our home in the town of Phillips Town and with Nat, not for twenty years, but I have served on the Phillips Town Comprehensive Plan Update Committee since twenty seventeen. And I just want to speak in favor of this application because I feel it addresses the contrast of what it means to live here, what it makes desirable to live here, and the responsibility we have to both protect our land as well as to share the land in a sustainable, thoughtful and responsible way. Scenic Hudson has proven itself as a trustworthy partner and has a strong reputation in our area for protecting our valley while at the same time creating a shareable space for public use. I think this project is no exception. Further, this proposal honors both the intentions of the Open Space Plan and the Phillips Town Comprehensive Plan, and I believe Scenic Hudson's resources are, and partnerships will ensure that the use of this land will remain as intended, will always strive to satisfy all parties involved, and will both protect and thoughtfully share these resources for many years to come. And thank you, everyone, for their work.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Kelly, who's next?
Michelle Smith.
Hi, um, this is Michelle Smith. I'm the executive director of the Hudson Highlands Land Trust, um, and I wanted to say that the Hudson Highlands Land Trust fully supports this subdivision application. This property is the number one, uh, property, as Nancy said, in the Open Space Index, um, and the property is also complex with, uh, structures on it and with the Lake Valhalla community, and therefore, in order to the conservation vision of this property to come to fruition, this subdivision is essential, um, and so we fully support it. I sent a letter with those comments to Kelly today, and hopefully she'll be able to forward those to the board. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Michelle. Who's next?
Derek Kirthner.
Mr. Geithner, go ahead, please. Mr. Geithner, can you hear us? Do you need to unmute him, Kelly?
Can you hear us?
Hello, this is Dirk Geithner. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Geithner.
Hi, Dirk Geithner, forty-nine Mountain View Drive, Lake
Hi Dirk Geithner, 49 Mountain View Drive, Lake Valhalla. I'd just like to say I'm hearing a lot of comments for, for this subdivision and the plan for making this open space for the general public. At first, I thought I was for this action, but now, after hearing everything, I feel that there's a lot of innuendo and a lot of unanswered questions. We've been told one thing, and I'm hearing different, different things tonight regarding the access off of Highland Road. Our deeded rights originally, when we bought into this area, was to keep, maintain the places private. I hear about all this open space and Sinek Hudson and everybody making it accessible for the general public. And alls I could think about is what's going on at Breakneck. I've been in this town for 50 years, and Breakneck used to be beautiful and pristine, and now it's destroyed based on the public. And I'd hate to see this happen to this area of the mountain. Too many unanswered questions of what the state's intention is. I'm hearing possible access for maintenance and emergencies. Down the line, they could eventually open this up for doing what they did over in Breakneck and other areas that have been open to the public. And I could see the whole area being overrun, let alone the wildlife and stuff that would be destroyed or damaged, such as the timber rattlers that live there and burrow in the mountains. Just too many unanswered questions at this time for me to endorse this. And I think there has to be a lot more information given to the public and to the, especially the homeowners of Lake Valhalla that have paid through their tax dollars. And when they purchased the house into a private community, that's now going to be, essentially possibly overrun with the mass public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geithner. Thank you, sir. Kelly, who's next?
Joseph Lombardi.
Okay, so we're going to take Mr. Lombardi, and that looks like Mr. Thompson, and we're going to stop. And if there's no more public speakers, we'll discuss whether to close the hearing. And if there are more, then we will defer because we're now, we're now 15 minutes past the duration of this meeting. So we just lost, Mr. Lombardi, why don't you go ahead, please. Sir, please state your name in two minutes, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Zuckerman and members of the Planning Board. My name is Joseph Lombardi, 19 Fieldstone Ridge, Lake Valhalla Community. I am the President of the Lake Valhalla Civic Association, a not-for-profit association which maintains an interest in the civic and social affairs of the 92-year-old Lake Valhalla community, which is surrounded by Slope Line, Sinek Hudson's 765 acres. There are 59 homes in the community. For 92 years, the community has had continuing use of the entire Lake Valhalla. We have worked diligently for years trying to come to an agreement with Slope Line, Sinek Hudson, regarding our community's purchase of Parcel B, which includes the north end of Lake Valhalla and the continuing access to the south end of the lake, which would be Parcel C under the proposed subdivision. Late today, Slope Line, Sinek Hudson refused to clarify our continuing access to the southern portion of the lake, which would be Parcel C. Absent a clarification of access, there will be an open lake with a division line, which is patently absurd. The town of Phillips Town could be called to respond to our trespassing on the southern end of Lake Valhalla, requiring essentially kayak police. Please understand that two community properties front on the south end of the lake. The Board of Directors of the Lake Valhalla Civic Association request that the three-lot subdivision currently in front of your board be postponed until clarification of access can be resolved. Two more quick points. As to the forming of a homeowners association, to date, 42 members of the community have joined together for the purposes of forming an HOA and purchasing Parcel B.
Mr. Lombardi, if you can summarize your remarks, please.
Fine. That was, that was essentially it.
Okay, sir. All right. So we've, I think we've reached the end of our public speakers. Kelly, is that correct?
There are two more, and then Pamela Richardson put her hand up, but there are two more from the audience.
All right, well, we're at 9:46, folks. We've gone for two hours and 15 minutes. I'm, I will be okay to let us have three more speakers, but at that point, we have got to call it quits. It's a long night for everyone. And unfortunately, Zoom is not a good technique when you start getting to the third hour. So I'm okay to let these three more speakers speak. Can I just check, is everyone okay with staying on for another 10 minutes or so? Yeah, okay. All right, let's finish the group here. Please keep your remarks to two minutes, please, to include the applicant's rep, Ms. Richardson. So let's go through the last three, and then that's it. And if we can't get, if others people want to speak, we'll have to keep the hearing open until next month.
Okay, Evan Thompson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so I'm the Park Manager for Hudson Island State Park, and I just wanted to weigh in on this and just assure the public that we have no intention of opening up trailheads or parking lots on any of the properties that are mentioned. What the gentleman was talking about before, about access for maintenance or rescues, is strictly that. We don't, we're not planning to open a trail. There, there already are several trails that go up the mountain. We would use those trails. In the future, we might improve them to make it so that we could get a vehicle up there, but it has nothing to do with public access. It has nothing to do with trailheads or bringing people from Breakneck. You know, that, that is not our plan. We've assured everybody in this whole process from the beginning. That's never been our plan. We understand that the nature of the neighborhood, it's, you know, small, windy, twisty dirt roads, not, not suitable for that kind of application. So we want to preserve the land. That's, that's our main goal, is to preserve the land and to preserve the fact that we have trails on the land that if someone else were to buy it, they could turn around and say, you know, you can't have those trails anymore. So that's our main concern. We've been managing that property, even though it's not our property. We've been maintaining the trails, cutting trees, fighting fires, rescuing injured people, lost hikers. That's all we, that's all we plan to do. I don't think anybody's going to notice besides the, the change in name of ownership. There's not going to be any other changes that we anticipate. And that's.
Mr. Thompson, can you just repeat who you represent with those?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm the Park Manager for Hudson Island State Park, which is New York State Park, one of, one of the New York State.
So you're an employee of the state of New York, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Kelly, Kelly, who's next?
James Calamano.
Okay, so you're going to be our last public speaker for this evening, and then with the exception of the applicant, Ms. Richardson, who seems to want to speak again. So Mr. Calamano, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead, please. Please state, yes, go ahead, please.
All right, first off, I appreciate the time to speak. Secondly, I just find it interesting that over the last two public meetings, the discussions about Slope Line, which is probably has the greatest impact on the town overall, is saved for last, and then we're kind of rushed through, and you can only have a certain number of speakers with so much time. So I'm a little upset with that, the second meeting that we come last. We should be first. That's number one. Number two, it's outrageous that Joe tells us at this point that Slope Line wants to try to make it against quote-unquote "the law" for people of Lake Valhalla to use the south end of the lake. It's utterly ridiculous. And why is that change coming at somewhat of the 11th hour of us making a deal with them? I could just envision them putting a fence through the lake. Third, you mentioned about access for maintenance and rescues off of Highland Road. That would mean that would access would be on the inside of the pillars. I'm looking at the drawing, and it appears that we're supposed to own the land right down to the pillars. So I'm not sure how you could create access off of Highland Road. Secondly, if the state has no issues or plans for developing the property, why will they not convey the land from those pillars to the homeowner's property line of the Slohavies? This way, we have complete protection against access to the land. Keeping in mind, if you go up onto Lake Surprise Road, and you go a little bit further past where Foundry Dam Road comes in, you have a fire road there. That's a road that, when I first moved up here, which is over 30, almost 30 years ago, that road was an area where people used to park. They're not allowed to park there anymore. But there's a clear-cut fire road that would give you as much access as you need for your maintenance and/or rescues. And as far as rescues are concerned, most of these rescues happen in and around Breakneck. I don't recall the last time somebody had to be pulled off the mountain on our side of Schofield Ridge.
Mr. Calamano, can you summarize your remarks, please?
No, what I'm just saying is this, just a lot of unanswered questions. There's a lot of information that is changing. Look at what changed today that Joe Lombardi, our president, presented. I mean, you know, so I just, I just think that you, you need to crawl on this and not make, you know, close out the public discussion and not have a third or fourth meeting on this. Because again, this has the greatest impact, not only on the people that live up here in Lake Valhalla, but the people of Phillips Town. People of Phillips Town are suffering for what goes on on 9D. We don't need another 9D on this side, and certainly don't want a fence through the lake. That's all I have to say at this point. I thank you very much for your work. It's not easy. And have a great evening.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir. Kelly, are there any more public speakers?
There's an Evan Thompson and Dirk Gethner, but nobody.
I believe, I believe they both, I believe they've both spoken at this point.
They have, yes. So nobody knew.
All right. No one, any, if there are no other public speakers, I'll ask, and I just received a text from our legislators. Is there Linda Cooper out there? Does she want to speak, Linda Cooper? Yes, I see. All right, Ms. Cooper, you're going to be our last speaker after, then Ms. Richardson will finish up, all right? That's it. It's the last speaker. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Zuckerman. Thank you. I was muted, so I was unable to get in earlier. But I'm Linda Cooper. I'm the Regional Director for New York State Parks and oversee the Teconic region, which are all of the state parks and historic sites in Westchester, Putnam, Duchess, and Columbia County. We're delighted to partner with Sinek Hudson to continue to protect the Hudson Highlands. And we're happy to collaborate with the Lake Valhalla Community Association to make sure that their very special residential community retains the character that makes it so beloved by its residents. To echo what our manager Evan Thompson said, you're not going to see any changes.
Because I'm limiting people to, oh, sorry, my daughter came in the room. Keep going, Linda, sorry.
I'm sorry.
We're doing our best. We're all doing our best.
You really won't see any changes, and our, our interests are open space and natural resource protection. And this is a very special property that, you know, that we're very pleased to be able to help protect in perpetuity. And it will become part of the Hudson Highlands State Park Preserve, which is, which has legal constraints associated with the natural resource protection. So I just wanted to make that crystal clear.
And then Linda repeating, and what entity are you representing?
New York State Parks, Office of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation. I am the Regional Director. And we have no intentions to build a parking lot on this side to bring significant, you know, traffic into the area, to add more trails or anything like that. It's a moment that we will use some of the existing trails.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Richardson, you have the last word.
Thank you very much, Chairman Zuckerman. I just wanted to speak very briefly to...
I think we lost you.
I just brought her back in the room.
Can you hear me?
Let's do that again, Ms. Richardson, and very, and emphasis on very briefly, please.
Absolutely. So I just want to point out that we purposefully designed a plan intended to minimize impact on the surrounding communities and create an arrangement that addresses a variety of interests while still preserving the incredible scenic and conservation values of this land. We partnered with New York State because we believe that they are the appropriate and the best entity with whom we can accomplish these goals. To address the issue raised by Mr. Geithner, and particularly by Mr. Lombardi, the internal discussions between LBCA and Sinek Hudson have absolutely no bearing on the subdivision application. What LBCA is attempting to do at this time is to use this process as a negotiating tool for issues unrelated to the proposed boundaries. And those proposed boundaries were previously agreed to prior to us bringing this application to the board. We designed the subdivision in concert with the LBCA community, with their leadership, with Mr. Lombardi directly. And I respectfully submit that it is not appropriate for the board to even consider or to wade into these issues, because these are private matters between private parties. And to address Mr. Geithner's concern, there is absolutely no fence proposed in the middle of the lake. Nobody is anticipating kayak police, nothing of that sort. Again, those are private issues, but none of those issues, none of those points that they were, that they raised have, have ever been on the table. Thank you very much for that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Richardson. So Mr. Gabba, it's, it's almost 10 o'clock. I would like to call this quits. The question is, we usually go to the board at this point for questions for the public hearing, and you and Ron probably have some additional technical items. Is there a problem with us closing the public hearing at this point and then revising those questions for the board at a later date? Or do we need to keep the public hearing open?
No, not at all. You can close the public hearing. And in the event that some unforeseen thing comes up, something new, something different, you could reopen the public hearing if you felt it was necessary to do so. The other thing I'd like to suggest, and I mean, you know, assuming you close the public hearing, that is. But I mean, if you close the public hearing, I'd suggest that you direct Ron to prepare a secret determination and a approval resolution, just in draft, not necessarily to be, I mean, you may have to modify it, but just so that you could have it for you at the next meeting for consideration. You may not want to act on it at all, but if you want it, it would be good to have it as opposed to, you know, holding your next meeting and then directing Ron and then coming back the month after that to, to consider.
Let's, let's do two things, and let's do two things. Let's do, first, let's talk about closing the public hearing. We'll take, we'll ask for a motion and a second, and we can discuss and then vote. That's just the policy. So you have a motion to close the public hearing on Slope Line. Kim makes the motion. Is there a second? Okay, Peter seconded. All in, I said, discussion. Any opposed to doing this matter? Anybody want to talk about it? Anybody want to keep it open? We feel like we've had a fulsome discussion in the public after, I don't know what the number has been, but I think in the 40, 50 range. Okay, so I'm going to take a vote then. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Aye. All opposed? All abstent, any abstentions? Any objections, abstentions? Okay, so we're closing the public hearing for Slope Line. Thank you very much. Appreciate the public's comment over the last two meetings. I'd like to quickly address the matter that Steve made about preparing documents. I'll take a motion on that topic, and a second, then we can discuss it and then vote. All right? So I'd like a motion to prepare the documents ahead of time, way to seek or determination. Anybody want to make that motion? If Kim wants to make that motion, a second. Neil seconded. Okay, any opposition to this idea? Any discussion about it? Anybody have a thought on that? Okay, so I'll take a vote then. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. So Ron, would you please do that, prepare the documents as per the request by, or the outline by Steve? Is that okay?
Certainly.
Okay, clearly, there are other questions that were raised, and I'd like to leave the board to talk. We'll put it on the agenda for next month to discuss, and if we find some new information. And Steve, I'd probably like you next time to give a quick update on what the core issues are now that we've heard the public, because I think, as, as Ms. Richardson identified, there are some issues that may be germane and maybe some issues that are not as germane that we've heard. So if you wouldn't mind preparing a brief for us verbally on that.
Yeah, I think probably the best thing, Neil, would be if we start out next meeting with just an update from Ron and myself regarding the outstanding issues. And then the board can chime in with their questions and the like. And then if it's appropriate, you can take a look at the draft resolutions Ron prepared.
Right, well, it won't be, it won't be first up. We're going to bring up Heitman first because he was, he missed tonight. So we're going to be, we're going to put role in Heitman's action at the first of the meeting next time. And then let me go back to the Magazino issue then, and then we'll close the evening. As I said, I want to make sure we had at least one of the public hearings closed before we added a second, a third public hearing. So I'd like to entertain a discussion about whether we have a scheduled public hearing on Magazino. We have a very busy agenda next month, as you imagine. We're continuing CRS. We're continuing CRS, we have Heitman, we have Kaiser and we have, or Kepler, and we have this. So I, I want to be mindful that if we add another public hearing, that's a very, that may be a very difficult agenda to get to. And Glenn, I'm not sure we'll even be able to get to it, given all the open issues already. So I'd like to just engage in a discussion because my, my, my sense right now is September is a very full month already as it is, without adding a public hearing on top of that. That's my viewpoint. I'm open to retaining a discussion about having a, a second public hearing to engage in, but I think we have enormous, we have a material number of topics to hit already in September. Anybody feel opposite to that and feel like we should put the Magazino on the agenda? For public hearing?
Let me tell, you, you've had a, you've, you skipped us over last month and I recognize that you had a full agenda. I also recognize you shortened the meeting by an hour and a half, but um.
Hour and a half? It's not a three, it's not a three-hour meeting.
Well, okay. I'll stand corrected on that.
I don't know where that comes from. We're, we're, we're here at two and a half hour mark, sir.
Well, my, that's, that's new, that's a brand new thing to me. But that aside, we've been there for two months. We've got a recommendation for a public hearing. It's, it, I really think it's important to have.
And I appreciate that, Glenn. And we're in the middle of a pandemic where we were out for three months and not doing business. We're doing our best to attend to all the clients, of which many are yours. And we're doing our best to do that with being mindful that we're volunteers, we're doing our best to serve their community. So unless I hear otherwise from any board members, I'd like to defer a public hearing on Magazino to the October meeting unless anyone feels strongly otherwise that we have room in the September meeting.
I would like, I respectfully request that if you do pass that motion, that you have a secondary motion to set the public hearing for October.
I, I don't have a problem with that at all, Glenn. In fact, I'm happy to pass a motion to have the public hearing in October, given the, the, the number of issues we have to deal with in September. So in fact, I'm happy to take a motion to Glenn's suggestion. We'll make him a proxy member of the planning board by that suggestion. And uh, can I have a motion that affects a set Magazino for an October public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second that? All right. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed and abstentions? All right. So I, the end of a very long evening. I want to thank you all, my fellow volunteers, for their efforts tonight. And uh, thanks for your engagement. I hope you all have a nice night. A motion to adjourn, please. Thank you, Peter. Second? All right. God bless you all. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye.